Evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order on August 11th, 2020, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to start by calling roll for us, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Here.
Commissioner McElroy?
Here.
Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Harless?
Here. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in the invocation tonight, please?
Absolutely. May we pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we join with the psalmist. Let us hear in the morning of your steadfast love, for in you we trust. Make us know the way we should go, for to you we lift up our soul. Our dear God, we need your wisdom in difficult days. As the pandemic continues, we continue to be concerned about the health and welfare of our citizens of this city and across our land, and we pray for wise physicians, wise scientists, to help us know how to deal with this and how to protect our people and how to heal them. We pray for schools right now as they adjust to new decisions that are being made. For families are having to make arrangements of, for children that are now going to be at home, we pray you would help them to find that and bless them. Father, we pray for those who are suffering from joblessness that need work, that you would help them find employment. Help the nonprofits of our community be able to help those that are in need. And Father, as we seek to take care of our community the best of our ability, we pray you would give us that wisdom. You would give us that discernment, you would give us that compassion, and you would give us that humility, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you very much. Commissioner Abraham, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Counting down from three, two, one, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
To each republic.
Which stands.
Under God, indivisible.
Liberty, justice. Justice for all.
Thank you. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. I do want to make sure that before we go into our business, that the public is aware, as they're watching, that this might be a familiar meeting to them. The items on this agenda are actually the same items that we took action on and decisions on from the two weeks ago meeting that we had. I do want to make sure, just so we can all kind of get on the same page here. We did receive a memo from our city attorney describing kind of the situation. I know that Commissioner Abraham had concerns, WPSD had concerns, and and I just want to take a moment, in case the public doesn't get a chance to read that memo themselves, just to share a few of the things that our city attorney shared with us. I think it's important for us to be considering how challenging these times are. And, you know, technology is not a perfect solution by any means. I also want to suggest, and I think that our city manager mentioned this to the commission earlier today, that we work on a policy that we can all agree on, that will help to set the terms for when we do have in-person meetings and when we decide to do virtual meetings. If you recall, we did have an in-person meeting, two meetings ago. Right after that was when we started to see the cases significantly increase in Kentucky, but also in McCracken County. Yesterday, there were 16 new positive cases announced in McCracken County. So I think as a commission, it would be wise for us to start to talk about where do we want to draw the line as a body together? And where do we feel safe and where do we want to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe as well? And perhaps we can utilize the case rate, whatever that might look like. So I'm going to be reaching out to each of you and talking about that over the next two weeks before our, not next meeting, which is tomorrow, but the next meeting. And let's come up with that policy so that we can all, and also for our media partners who want access to footage that they will know also when to expect us to have in-person meetings and when they expect us to have virtual meetings. So before I continue, I just want to read a few of the comments that our city attorney shared with us in her conclusion, in her memo. And she said, "Very generally, it is my opinion that the city's technical difficulties were not in violation of KRS 61.826 or SB 150, which is the state law. Unsurprisingly, there is very little Attorney General's opinions on the issues raised in this memo due to the fact that we have been operating in these unprecedented times for the last six months. Consequently, I cannot guarantee that the Attorney General will agree with the city's position since there are literally no OAG opinions on direct point." And remember, we just started this pandemic six months ago, which is why. She goes on to say, "Regardless, the Attorney General issued a general opinion concerning the interpretation of the Open Meetings Act during the pandemic on March 18th, 2020. In that opinion, the Attorney General stated, 'These are not normal circumstances.' In the words of Justice Powellmore, 'When all else is said and done, common sense must not be a stranger in the house of law.' Much of my opinion," I'm reading Stacey Blankenship's memo, "in this memo are rooted in common sense. Consequently, although I strongly believe that the city engaged in good faith and did not violate any provisions of the Open Meetings Act, it is my opinion that the items on the agenda of the July 28th, 2020, meeting should be presented again at the next city commission meeting so that going forward, the city is not concerned about the viability and/or legality of those items voted on by the commission." As you know, as she has told us already, I have spoken to J.D. Chaney at Kentucky League of Cities, as well as Morgan Patterson, both of whom are in agreement with the advice and/or conclusions of this memo. So I feel like we're in a good position to do this again. It doesn't hurt us to do this again, just to make sure that in the future, if Attorney Generals look back and say, okay, there was some problems there that were covered. But again, I appreciate our attorney for digging in on this for us to making sure that we are in compliance. I appreciate our city clerk and our city manager spending a lot of time in the last week to make sure that we are in compliance with the law and that we are being as transparent as possible for our community and our public. So I also want to say thank you to the commission for agreeing to spend two nights of your week tonight talking about city business at these meetings. So I appreciate that. I'm going to move us into the consent agenda and into our order of business. Items on this consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove for discussion tonight? Okay, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Move minutes for the July 14th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. Personnel actions, receive and file documents, a municipal order accepting grant funds through the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for our COPS hiring program, CHP Grant, awarded in the amount of $375,000 for the hiring of three new school resource officers and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And Commissioner Abraham, you're up next.
This is a proposed motion on the loose design. Before I read that, I just want to reiterate some of the points I've made in the past regarding this project. I know that there are probably at least 2,000 of our residents that see this project, this development, as not needed. We've talked about this before, and it keeps coming up, so I was like, we keep getting a chance to do the right thing on this. The rain that we had a couple of weeks ago, just to reiterate, our for proper stormwater management attention. It continually caused serious damage to homes. The money that we're going to spend on a project that, like I said before, unless some of the other candidates run it, it will change their mind. It's not going to have the support moving forward. When we're talking about money that we're spending, yeah, over just some of the things within our purview that we need to take care of monetarily wise. I mean, I'm looking at a firehouse that has asbestos in it. We put a tape job on it. I'm looking at a firehouse, when you're looking at a clean air assessment, there's issue with the air in that firehouse, I think that's number four, with traces of mold. I remember when we were remodeling City Hall and the skylight, they were working on the skylight and it had some issues with possible asbestos, and we pretty much shut it down. I mean, we had employees, very restricted, I think some of the guys didn't even come into work. But we have these issues in one of our firehouses, and it doesn't seem to be that big a deal. That's a problem for me. How much will it cost to fix that? I don't have any idea how much this final ticket's going to be on the due diligence that the city manager has been told to pursue. But I know that we have issues with, right out in front, we, I sent the city manager an email the other day. We have folks in Wiltshire, that's Wiltshire boundary in the city, they can't get down to the fountain because it's not Wiltshire accessible. We have a lot of things here, right here, that we need to take care of, and with our funding, it's very weird now because of the pandemic. We have no idea what that ripple effect is going to be. So I think we should keep our cards close to the chest, work on those things that are directly in our purview. So the motion that I make, I propose a motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order directing the city manager to continue the suspension of the agreement with Loose and Associates, Inc. for personal design and construction management service for the indoor recreation and aquatic facility until January of 2021.
Second.
I might have missed it, Commissioner Abraham. Did you read the motion that says that you proposed to rescind the amendment? City clerk, I might be wrong on this. The motion I had was to rescind the amendment from Commissioner Abraham?
What I read was the original motion to rescind it. What I read was our original, what is it, municipal order?
So the motion that was last time was the rescinding, there should be a page there.
Well, it's, the original municipal order did not have an amendment to it.
Well, we're trying to amend it at the 14th meeting.
Yes, the amendment is, the municipal order is now amended. In my understanding, it's Commissioner Abraham, you want to read the motion to rescind the amendment to go back to the original?
Absolutely. And I'm looking at what you gave me. Lindsay, it says, "If motion to rescind passes."
It should be, I think, the one right before that. It should.
Before that. Should be highlighted with Abraham in front of it.
I got you. Okay. I see the pages stuck together. Well, I will happily read this again.
Do we need to take the item off the table officially that had a second?
We didn't vote on it.
That was just a mistake, but if you want to take that off the table, you can do that.
You want to read it again?
Well, I think you want to possibly take off what you had already put on. I mean, really, it's already on the table for us for discussion. I know it seems silly, but it is. I mean, if we're following Robert's Rules of Orders, we have an item on the table for discussion right now because we had a second. So we're not ready for that item. It's not an item of discussion, so we need to pull it off.
Yeah.
Can you propose, Lindsay, just some quick language? I can't remember the Robert's Rules part on this. Can anybody recall? City manager, anybody?
You could either do a motion to table the item under consideration and then go back, do the motion to rescind, and if that passes, then do a motion to bring this off the table. Or you could take a vote on it, see if it goes down or goes up, but then we're going to have an amended motion out there and an unamended motion out there.
City clerk?
Yes.
What's the best way to handle this?
In my opinion, because what I think that you read was a motion that we would make if your motion to rescind passed. So what you read is something that can't even be on the table whatsoever to begin with. It would be the next step if your motion to rescind had passed. I think that if the board agrees that we just simply move on, say that that was just a mistake, we'll just go back to what the correct motion, if the board agrees to that, that it is not something that we actually wanted on the table, that nobody wanted that on the table.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think that's up to Commissioner Abraham since he read it. Are you sure you're good with that?
I agree.
Read it over?
I'm asking, are you?
To rescind the amendment? That's what you're asking me?
I'm asking what, yes, what you're saying. Did you, if you read the wrong?
Yeah. Yes. Yes, 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 yes. So what I will read is the rescind amendment to the municipal order for Loose Design Associates.
Okay.
All right. Okay. All right. So without going back over everything I said before, all right, being said, I move that the Board of Commissioners rescind the amendment to the municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Directing the City Manager to Continue the Suspension of the Agreement with Loose and Associates, Inc. for Professional Design and Construction Management Services for an Indoor Recreation and Aquatic Center until January of 2021, and further directing the city manager to continue..."
Are you still there?
Wait a minute. Due diligence related to the project, as adopted at last commission meeting, that the commission may vote on the original municipal order to continue the suspension of Loose Design and Associate Agreement without additional due diligence work. It's a little tricky there.
So could we clarify? Yeah. Sorry, we need a second to get it on the table.
A second.
Thank you. So could we clarify that if we vote yes, we are voting, Lindsay, can you clarify that? If we vote yes, we're voting to what? If you vote yes, you would be voting to rescind the amendment to the municipal order. So basically, you would be saying city manager can pause, continue to pause with Lowson Associates without any additional due diligence. Okay. Vote yes, that's what you would be saying. Just continue the pause, period. That would rescind back the original municipal order. Any comment before we vote on this item or questions?
I would just. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would just like to make a clarification because I've had some discussions with people. The thing I think we are interested in, and this is the only thing I'm really interested in, is finding out if there are partners out there that are going to bring big money to the project because that is important to this project, whether it be a partner here in the city or a big company that would come in with naming rights and make a big donation. That could change the scope of the project if we had a huge amount of money brought to the table. And that could take a little bit of money. I don't think it would take much, but these people may need to talk to the design people to ensure that they are interested, and that's what we're interested in. We're not talking about big chunks of money here.
Yeah.
Game-changing money, you know.
Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor. We're all in agreement that the project needs to be paused until January 1, 2021, and we all support that at this point, and the public does. I don't object to the city manager gathering new information that will help the new commission make the best decision for the city going forward, but I would not support the spending of any more taxpayer money on this endeavor. I think the voters kind of spoken in that area. But, so I don't mind getting more information, but I'm not in favor of spending any more taxpayer money to gather that information.
I was just going to add, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. I was going to add to Commissioner McElroy's comments that, yes, you know, we've heard concerns from the community, and Commissioner Abraham's brought up the price tag on this project as well. And so for me, you know, the three main concerns that I heard from our community was, one, you have no private dollars being put into this facility. Two, they, the community, and when I did my inclusion calls back in June, over and over again, I heard on those calls, an interest in a place like this, but that they, the community, the members of the calls with me were suggesting that there wasn't enough community input on what the facility looked like and how it was going to operate. And additionally, to make sure that it is a project, which I think we all had that intention from the beginning, but it doesn't hurt to circle back on making sure that we're making, we're including inclusion policies and programs in this facility as well. And then lastly, part of the business model and the concern from people that I heard from was that we didn't have a tenant to help fit the bill for us. And so those are the three items that I am in agreement with to be able to do some work on because if you can imagine that there's a project that we can do for less, where the $20 million bond, some of that gets freed up for other things, like Commissioner Abraham is mentioning, then perhaps this pause gives us an opportunity to do more of that due diligence to provide the community with an alternative project. So, you know, I think that I trust our city manager frankly, and I trust our team to tell us if we have the funds, if we don't have the funds, to be able to do this little more due diligence work. You know, I just always go back to the fact that our community has talked about a facility like this for over 50 years. And I realized that there was a group of people who got very loud and was against this project. But at the same time, you know, for me, I'm operating off of this idea that we've done multiple, you know, master plans where this kind of project has come up from our community as a request of things to accomplish. And so perhaps the model that we put together out of the gate wasn't the right model. And maybe there's an opportunity here over the next several months and maybe into the new commission where you can explore an option for a model that will work for this community. So I think it's a good idea to at least not throw the baby out with the bathwater and to try to make a project that might be feasible for this community.
I do believe, Mayor, good comments, that certainly I still support, I think most of us do, and the public still supports. New and improved and more, baseball, softball, and soccer fields for Paducah and McCracken County, that's high on the agenda and has always been a need for decades. And recreation tourism is multimillion-dollar tourist industry, as we've always said. And I think, you know, expenditures in that area are money that the public supports, and I'm glad the county's working with us on that and taking the brunt of doing that. And I, you know, I think there's a lot of people who support a six or seven million dollar pool for swimming competitions with the 300 to 500 people that show up for those meets. But the, you know, the money obviously needs to be adjusted. The $20, $21 million figure is just not, doesn't have the public support behind it. So we can explore, get information, decide how to go forward. Certainly, we need a first-class recreation center here, and I think it would have a lot to do with increasing job opportunities and make us more attractive to potential employers. But, you know, in our favor, gaining more information, I'm just not going to support spending additional taxpayer money to do that, but otherwise, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
I would add, I'm on the Government Affairs Committee with G-PED, and I asked Commissioner Abraham about the article that Bruce had shared with us on site selection and the fact that community amenities were not on there. And he was really shocked that we had taken that and used that in terms of non-support for something like this because he said that list was specifically about job site selection. It was not about city selection. And he would come back with us at his next update and address the importance of city amenities. They're very important to employers that are looking to bring companies. And I then received an article from one of the people in that meeting. The title of the article is "Live First, Work Second", all about how communities are not after now attracting jobs. I mean, companies are after attracting talent because the companies are coming to where the talent is. The talent is going to where the cool community is, and the cool community has these amenities. So I'm anxious for Bruce to come back and address that because he very much is a supporter of the community being the breeding ground for good, healthy living, and then the jobs will follow. So I invited him to come back, and I hope in his next update, he can include that.
I totally agree with our city being a cool place to live. And you were talking about these partners, I mean, I'm looking at this, where are they? If this, if this, if this project is such a great project, what do we have to convince them to invest in this project? By going through a due diligence where we hire a company to sit down with them and convince them to come? Or is that something that this project is so appealing to them that our city manager on a present salary can have a meeting with these people and talk to them about it, and they're like, I'm all in? So one cost, well, I don't know how much that price tag would be if we go with what's proposed. The other one would be, okay, I believe in this project, I have resources, I want to be involved in it. Here's a trunk full of money, make it happen. I don't think, I don't think that's what we're talking about because we're talking about hiring, extending an agreement with Loose Design to go out and talk to folks about the project. Depending on who you talk to, this is the best things in his pockets. Well, if I'm in the private sector and I want to be involved in this project, I don't need anybody else to convince me of it. As Mayor said, we've done studies and all of this. So where are those folks? I mean, it's almost like we got to convince them or Loose Design that it's a great thing.
I think we need to be clear, Commissioner, on what the activities are in that amendment. They're not to go out and talk somebody in to supporting this project. We've had conversations with potential tenants and partners that need details in order to make a business decision on whether or not they're going to be a tenant of the space. The activity that we're allowing the city manager to engage in is an activity by which a potential tenant has opportunity to talk to the designer to say, here's what this space could look like, here's what would fit, here's what wouldn't fit. this space could look like, here's what would fit, here's what wouldn't fit. And before they publicly announce that they're going to be a part of this, they have to make sure that it, it fits their business model. So this is, this is not just go talk somebody into something. This is a technical detail that has to be covered before a tenant can say yes, uh, or no. And so we're not going to know that if there's not an opportunity for that detailed conversation to happen. And, and our city manag- manager is a smart man, but he's not an architect. And so we have to have the architect available to have those technical conversations.
The conversations, I mean, you can have the technical conversations. Uh, I know that, uh, the, the majority of the folks that, uh, that's reached out to, uh, I mean, we had them here in, in chambers, um, they've, they've voiced their concern as about as loud as they can, that this is not something that our city should be going, doubling our debt, getting involved in. And as you say, Mayor, all the time, these are trying times. These are unusual times, and we're, we're looking at going out and, and building a, a $20 million facility that, uh, that it.
And this project was put on hold. It's been put on pause. This was not an open checkbook. I'm sorry, I've been trying to talk for a while, but this was not an open checkbook for the city manager to have to go out and do what you're saying to talk to those people. It was simply to allow him, if someone came to him, many of those companies that were being, that were talking to our community for that were also hit by COVID, and now they are back into recovery mode as well and would be for the rest of the year. So it was simply to allow, if they came to him, that he could talk to them. If they needed a question answered from Loos, he could do that.
And it's not, it's not money we're definitely spending. It's, it's money that if we had to, I think we can trust Jim to not spend it unless he needs to.
It was, she said.
Really, you know?
So, so.
Only if it was needed to be spent. It was not a certain amount of money to be spent.
Okay, so that's, that's what you want? So Loose Design is, is just meeting with people? Then I don't have anything to talk to folks. So that whole conversation about having certain monies available to the city manager to spend and the price list that Loose Design kicked back to us saying, if we do A, B, C, and D, this will be what the price is. If we double up on A, this will be what the price is. So where does that, where does that land with what you're saying, Commissioner Wilson?
That was a price list that if he has to call them and ask them for A, B, or C, that that's what the estimate would be.
Not that he would for certain.
Right. It was just a price list. If he needed that advice, it was there. It was so we would know what, if he did get that question, he would be spending. And there was a spending limit set on it. It is not an open checkbook. It is a very much with, it just within what he could spend, which is not a very large amount of money.
Okay.
I'm gonna call the question if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, city clerk, we call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
No.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Mayor Harless?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the municipal order.
And just as a point of order, if, if it would make everyone more comfortable, um, as far as the mistaken motion, if Commissioner Abraham, if you want to make a motion to withdraw that, we could get a second and a vote on that, just to have that completely clear, if that makes everyone more comfortable.
So.
Just a motion, okay?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move through the agenda, and next up we have a municipal order, and I think Lindsay has that motion. Oh, you're on mute. Push your space bar.
There we go. It on my screen really quickly. A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Directing the City Manager to Continue the Suspension of the Agreement with Loos and Associates Incorporated for Professional Design and Construction Management Services for an Indoor Recreation and Aquatics Facility Until January of 2021, and Further Directing the City Manager to Continue Due Diligence Related to the Project As Amended on July 14th, 2020."
I make a motion to approve, um, the municipal order.
Second.
Any more discussion on this? I think we're ready to, to move on on this one.
Just a point of clarification, Lindsay, you kind of broke up on that. Did everybody hear the motion on the table?
The motion is to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Right.
Yeah. Heard it.
Commissioner Watkins, you heard it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to, um, adoptions. Um, city clerk, item, uh, 4A, it looks like.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Zone Change for Property Located at 5802 Commerce Drive, From R1 Low Density Residential Zone to M1 Light Industrial Zone. This Ordinance is summarized as follows: Re-zoned property located at 5802 Commerce Drive from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to M1 Light Industrial Zone Classification, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to effect such rezoning."
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on this that we've heard from Tamara a couple times, um, on this item? Is everyone comfortable moving forward? Any questions? Okay, um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And let's move to item 4B, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving Change Order Number One with Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, in Order to Extend the Contract and Include the Contract Pricing for Pavement Markings. This Ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute Change Order Number One with Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, to extend the contract to December 31st, 2020, and to include contract pricing for pavement markings for the City of Paducah's resurfacing program in accordance with the price list in the change order."
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments about this item?
Uh, just the, uh, the reason for the change order?
City manager, or do we have Mr. Murphy on the call with us tonight?
I don't believe Rick's on the call with us. Uh, this is basically to include pavement markings. It was not originally included in the, uh, the contract, but it does not change the overall contract price according to Mr. Murphy at our last meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, all right. City clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And item 4C, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Transfer of Municipally-Owned Real Properties Located Throughout Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky to the Paducah-Mcracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the provisions of the City Ordinance Number 98-8-5927, establishing the agency within Paducah. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah authorizes the transfer of city-owned real properties located at various locations throughout McCracken County, Kentucky, to Paducah-Mcracken County Joint Sewer Agency pursuant to the provisions of the City Ordinance establishing the agency. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of Paducah, Kentucky, to execute and deliver a general warranty deed of conveyance of the real properties."
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? And Commissioner McElroy serves on that board for us.
Yay!
And Don does such a great job of managing his capital partners. It's impressive. Yeah, he's a good partner for us. Okay, um, city clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna move into the next section of our agenda. Um, these are the introductions, and, uh, let's start with item 5A, please, Lindsay.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2020B in the aggregate principal amount of $2,945,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing the size of the bonds by up to $295,000, or decreasing the size of the bonds by any amount, for the purpose of refunding the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2010B maturing on or after June 1st, 2021, the proceeds of which were used to refund the original cost of financing the expansion of the Julian Carroll Convention Center and the construction of the Four Rivers Center for the Performing Arts. Authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of an amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement by and among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Paducah-Mcracken County Convention Center Corporation, and the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission in connection with the issuance of the bonds, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of the notice with a state local debt officer, and providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds and the plan of refunding, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is, authorizes the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds designated as Series 2020B in the approximate principal amount of $2,945,000 by the City of Paducah, Kentucky. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of refunding the city's outstanding general obligation refunding bond, Series 2010B, maturing on or after June 1st, 2021, the proceeds of which were used to refund the sin, city's general obligation bond, Series 2001, the proceeds of which were used to finance the cost of an expansion of the Julian Carroll Convention Center and to construct Four Rivers Center for the Performing Arts. The ordinance further authorizes the execution and delivery by the city of an amended and restated interlocal cooperation agreement by and among the city, the county of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah-Mcracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Convention Center, and the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau, and McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission. Pursuant to the ordinance and the interlocal agreement, certain transient room taxes to be received from the Bureau and certain county payments will be pledged as additional security for the bonds. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the, the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of a bond payment fund, for the maintenance of a previously established sinking fund, for the certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds, and for the execution of such additional instruments as shall be necessary to accomplish the plan of refunding. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on June 1st of each of the years, 2021 through 2026. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city and provisions is made for the collection of tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bond, subject to certain credits as provided in the ordinance and the interlocal agreement as required by KRS 83A 6.060, the following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. The bond shall be, shall be full general obligation of the city and for the payment of the bonds and the interest thereof, the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period of the bonds, during the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and there hereby is levied on all taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in the amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when and as due. It being hereby found and determined that the current tax rates are within all applicable applicable limitations. The tax shall be and is hereby ordered computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collection by the same officers in the same manner, and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of the years are certified, extended, and collected. The tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided, however, that each year, to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds, including the amounts available under the interlocal agreement and are appropriated for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated."
Whoa.
So moved.
Good job.
That's worse than the budget.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
So Mr. Perkins is on the call, and, and I know we probably have people watching that may not have been watching last time. Um, that is a long-winded way of saying we are about to save money on the interest rate. Uh, can you just give us a quick overview, um, Mr. Perkins?
Again, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Basically, this is a bond that we floated, um, in partnership with the CVB and the county back in 2001 for $9 million. And we refinanced it in the year 2010, saved, I think it was, um, $986,000 in interest. And then we're in an environment now where we can refinance it again, and we believe we can save, uh, perhaps as much as $170,000 over the next six years. Uh, this bond is one of the longest ones we've ever had. It's a 25-year bond issue, but it does expire, gets fully paid off in year 26. And, uh, it's, it is fully paid for by a non-local people. It's called the bed tax. And so more people come in, stay in our hotels, they're the ones that are paying for this bond issue.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Perkins? No? Okay, all right, thank you. We'll move on. Uh, I think we're on item 5B, it looks like.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2020-6-8641, entitled 'An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government.'" This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, as adopted by Ordinance Number 2020-6-8641, be amended by the following reappropriations: Transfer $141,000 from the FY 2021 Fleet Trust Fund fund balance to the Fleet Trust Fund."
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any comments? Again, we discussed this last time. Um, any comments, city manager? Do you have anything you'd like to share or add?
Yeah, just to add to that, Madam Mayor, this was, uh, basically done last year, last fiscal year in FY 20. Uh, we didn't pull the trigger prior to the, the fiscal year, so we need to re-amend the budget this year in FY 21 to be able to, uh, uh, purchase the, uh, lawn equipment for Paxton Golf Course.
Excellent. Well, this is a good example of the Fleet Trust Fund that was put in place here in the city a long time ago, um, which I think was one of the greatest things that has happened to this organization, is we can save for these vehicles over time and not have to pull a large chunk of money, um, at once. So those are funds in the Fleet Trust Fund that have been building over time, which is a good thing. And, and then while we're talking about Paxton Park Golf Course, we should probably put a plug in for them. If you haven't played golf there in a while, you should go because they need your support from our community. Any other comments or questions about this item? No? Okay, let's move on to item 5C.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 126-76 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, pertaining to electronic signs in the MU and A1 districts." This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance accepts and adopts the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission to amend the Code of Ordances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to allow electronic signs in MU and A1 zones under similar standards as the B2 district, with one additional standard proposed, which prohibits changing of the message between the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM to prevent any flashing during sleep hours." to prevent any flashing during sleep hours.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this item tonight? No? Okay, we'll move on to item 5D, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 126-176 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to provide for an alternative rezoning approval process, renaming of the section, expanding notice requirements, and reordering and renumbering of the section. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance accepts and adopts the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to allow for an alternative map amendment process to provide for added efficiencies. This amendment would allow for the Planning Commission recommendations for map amendments to become final 21 days after the Planning Commission's decision if there are no requests that the application be brought before the Board of Commissioners. Further, this ordinance cleans up certain language, including the renaming of the section, organization of the section, and expanding the legal notice parameters and the amount of time given.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think Ms. Tracy's on the phone with us. Do you want to give us a quick overview of this item again, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. The Planning Commission went forward and approved this recommendation to change our zoning ordinance to allow for an alternative method of approving rezoning classifications. In addition, the amendment also enlarges the area in which an applicant, or actually staff, provides notice, legal notice of zoning and other land use-related applications. This is an effort to expand and become more inclusive in our public engagement process. This gives them a notice that they actually have time to react to, and this also gives them notice in a more meaningful way in terms of what it says and who they can contact to get more information. The alternative rezoning process basically puts the default of the ordinance adoption process into the situation of an approval as opposed to the default being a denial. So it's basically putting the positive affirmative action as opposed to the negative action. And then finally, we just got some general cleanup because the section hasn't been touched in a couple decades. I'm hoping this will be one of the, will be the, one of the first of many amendments to the ordinance coming up.
It strikes me that, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on this commission about changing our reputation as not being business-friendly. People on this call, the staff, have worked very hard for many years now trying to make sure that all of our processes internally are reflective of a city that wants to be business-friendly. It sounds like this is a good step in that direction as well.
Yes, this actually will save an applicant anywhere from two to three weeks on the development timeline. And as you know, time is money. And so that's a very meaningful subtraction to the length of time it takes to get things done in Paducah.
Great news.
I think this goes hand in hand with one of our organizational values of customer experience and just reinforcing that and putting, I love the thought of putting the affirmative action as a positive, you know, instead of a negative result.
Great. Any other questions or comments about this item? No? Okay, thank you, Ms. Tracy. We're going to move on to, where am I? I think I'm at 5E.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving a city block development agreement between the City of Paducah and Wayland Ventures Development, LLC, for development of a boutique hotel, parking, open space, and mixed-use residential building located at the city block bounded by Second Street, Broadway, North Water Street, and Jefferson Street, declared real property to be surplus property, authorizing the associated property transfer and the execution of all documents related to same. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a development agreement with Wayland Ventures Development, LLC, for a city block boutique hotel, parking, open space, and mixed-use residential building located at the city block bounded by Second Street, Broadway, North Water Street, and Jefferson Street, and authorizes the associated property transfer to Wayland Ventures Development.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about this item tonight?
I got a few comments, Mayor.
Okay.
A new downtown hotel, I think, would be wonderful for our community. I do support a downtown hotel. Real question to me is, what is the best location for the hotel? Another proven local contractor I talked to today is interested in a hotel development in this area and actually a better location. I support the local developer. It's a better location, closer to the convention center, takes the parking issue off the table, and we could get a better deal for the city, I do believe. If we approve this agreement, it takes the other development off the table. So those are my reasons for opposing this agreement. Thank you.
Commissioner, can I ask you a question? When you say it takes it off the table, can you clarify?
Well, this person and, I mean, private developers know best how to invest their money and what would be profitable. But it took us many, many, many years to ever get a hotel in downtown Paducah, and it is supporting itself. And so there is interest in a second hotel. I just find it difficult to believe, and I hope I'm wrong, that the downtown area would support three hotels successfully. So that's, you know, that's the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Watkins, are you prepared to tell who that developer is and where the site is that these people are wanting to build?
Well, I don't have permission to do that, but I would just say he's a proven local developer, and he's very serious. And there is land in that area that is available to this developer, and it is closer to the convention center. I think a better location, and it takes the parking issue off the table. The parking issue, it is there. I went downtown last Wednesday about 7:00 PM just to look, and it was a Wednesday night about 7:00 PM, and the lot was two-thirds of the way full. So I do understand people's concerns, and they want to place the park. And by the way, Broadway and Jefferson were, Broadway from about Fourth Street to the river was packed on both sides of the street and parking, and Jefferson for a couple blocks from the river. So I think there is a need for parking down there. I think people do have a legitimate concern about losing that parking area. But still, the bigger reason is, one, this is a local developer. He's proven, he has been very successful in this community, and it's a better location and it's closer to the convention center. So I'm just worried about, at the very least, I think we ought to hold off and see what happens. But I just think if we move forward with this development, we're going to lose a better opportunity that awaits us.
Well, I'll just, can you hear me? Well, the, I haven't talked, I haven't spoken to very many people at all that is against a hotel being developed downtown. That's not it at all, just not right there, not on the city block. So I think that's, that's okay, that's reasonable. No one's against progress in our downtown area. Our downtown businesses would reap the benefits of a second hotel, not that far down the road, down the street, about a block. So I just want to reiterate that, that most of the folks I talk to is like, hey, down, additional hotel would be great. No one's, no one's talking, no one's talking down there, just not right there. So those are my comments on that.
I think there's excitement for this project. And I have an inbox full of people that are excited about a vibrant, right at the foot of Broadway downtown. And a lot of people that feel like it will enhance the convention center as well because they're, they don't see that as a far walk over there or a short shuttle ride, which I'm sure would be available during convention time. We have an outside developer in a very difficult economic time that wants to spend $21 million down there, invested, and rejuvenate our downtown, increase our tax base, provide jobs. I think it's really an exciting project, and I think our community is overwhelmingly supportive of this. And I'm excited about it.
I'll just say, we had a large group here last week from across the state, Leadership Kentucky. They stayed at the Holiday Inn, had a great stay there, and they walked back and forth to downtown the entire time they were here and didn't have any problem with it. So I've heard a lot of excitement about it. There will be a lot of improved infrastructure to make that walk easier between the two and more visible and more lighting. So I don't see that as, that, you know, I usually do want to stay at the hotel next to the convention center. But I know Commissioner McElroy, you've talked multiple times about you look for a different type of hotel when you go to a convention. So, you know, there, this is a very respected developer in our state who has brought us $21 million that he wants to develop and is willing to start with it and will help us fulfill the requirement to be a TIF district. You know, I hadn't heard about this other one until you mentioned it, Commissioner Watkins. So, I mean, this is on the table for us tonight for discussion. We had a great discussion two weeks ago about it when they joined us on this call.
I appreciate you, Commissioner Wilson, reminding the public of that. We did hear directly from Wayland Ventures. In addition to, Katie Axe gave her presentation outlining the agreement. So I do encourage anyone in the public that wants to see that presentation to go back to the July 28 meeting and take a look at that. You know, I guess for me, I think back to the way that we wrote our TIF application and the vision that we cast to the state that we wanted to see here in Paducah when we agreed to apply for the TIF program here in the City of Paducah. And I was actually just thinking back, we also got a copy of the Owensboro TIF application to look at, and they're very similar in a lot of ways. And they are, both have cast a vision for these communities to be vibrant, dynamic tourism communities. I believe that Paducah already is that. I believe we have a lot to grow from. I hope, Commissioner Watkins, that whoever you're talking about, even if this continues to go through, will understand the benefits of the TIF program for them specifically. Because I think the best-case scenario is we get this TIF catalyzed with this one project, and then our local developers can find their opportunity. There are plenty of opportunities in the downtown area listed in that TIF. We still have the Kresge site that's wide open. We still have the showroom lounge that needs to be redeveloped. And there's multiple other programs or projects in our TIF application. So we've got to get this started, we got to get it jump-started. And I hope that, like I said last time, I really hope that we'll continue to believe in ourselves that in five to six to seven years from now, we can see Owensboro's on their fourth hotel in their downtown area. I hope that that's how vibrant we've been able to make this community in this downtown. And a lot of times, when you have one developer putting their money down, other developers get interested. So, Commissioner Watkins, I hope that you'll help us to start to build that relationship with whomever you're talking about and talk about what opportunities are on the table because I believe that they are. And so I'm looking forward to seeing this through. I will, I'm going to ask any other comments because I do have one thing that I wanted to share with you all tonight about an issue I heard in the agreement.
I just want to remind you, you said opportunity, that this is in the opportunity zone, and there is a certain timeframe on that as well. So they, both projects would be able to take advantage of an opportunity zone which provides a lot of advantages in addition to the TIF. So those are multiple tools that developers would have downtown.
Right.
There too, Madam Mayor, to kind of emphasize what you just said. It goes back to the conversation we've had multiple times internally. It's yes and. So Commissioner Watkins, I appreciate the interest from the local developer. That is fantastic, and that is what we need to just make the area boom down there. Because as we talked about before, if you remember back when we had the celebration of the TIF, was just down there, it's just booming with excitement and potential. It's going to explode. And this is a $21 million shot into our economy. And if we can, but it doesn't work on its own. It can't work independently. It's going to have that limning effect, or it's going to draw additional development and growth. And having that local support like we've had with the Lingate project, having the local support with this new project is going to make it very helpful for us. So we got to continue to move it and grow. We got to move the needle on the compass, continue to grow the area down there because the more we generate in the TIF, that begets the increment, and the increment is what we can use to reinvest in the TIF. So as you can see, it builds upon itself like a snowball. It's kind of the opposite of the Dave Ramsey, Ramsey snowball. Instead of getting smaller, it's getting bigger, you know? So we're going to be able to build that excitement and that momentum. And it really pleases me to hear that we have a local developer interested in that. And I'm hoping that we can work with them to generate more interest because they too can benefit from the TIF, just like the next item on the agenda, the Lingate Agreement. They too can benefit from the TIF. And also remember, it wasn't really mentioned too much two weeks ago, but when Wayland came here, it wasn't just for a hotel. It was to build this sense of, this community space, this gathering space, which they did, were not just the hotel. They did that with the hardscape park, the softscape park, as well as the mixed-use residential and retail along Broadway. So it's much more than just the hotels. It's the beginning of a redevelopment. Now, that's what TIFs do, they're for redevelopment.
I would just, yes.
I sat down with the city attorney that helped us with this and went over this contract line by line. And I was just impressed with his answers and the negotiations that took place. And his final statement was, this is the best city-friendly economic deal he's ever seen in 42 years of practicing law and doing this kind of thing. So I think this is a great opportunity for our city. It is city-friendly, and it's also a good for the developer. It's a win-win.
Yeah, I agree with just about everything that City Manager said in this regard. I do believe that this, our town, our downtown, this area from the, from the Carson Center down to the convention center is a thoroughfare that is ready to explode. I believe that. With the bill grant that we got, with the development that's going on on the wet side of the flood wall. If you remember, some of you guys weren't here, but if you remember, Lingate, they decided to do business in Paducah. So we're not, it's not a stranger to us where developers want to come and do business here in our city. They see something in our city, they feel that they can do business here. No one's in business to lose money. They think they can do business here. The TIF district, that whole process is a wonderful tool that municipals have to, for development. We have that. We have local people interested in developing. So the TIF, it is time-sensitive, but there are extensions. So I don't think that just because we have a, let me say this, Wayland is a great company. Those guys are top-notch. So it's not so much, it has nothing to do with their potential to do business the way they do business. They're a great company. It's all about where we are and what we're willing to give up in this particular area for a development spot. There's other areas. Like you said, there's plenty of area there that other developers are going to come and look for. It's been proven here that they, developers do that. They come to Paducah. Why is that? Because they know that they can make, they can make a go of it right here in a river city. So I'm excited about the opportunities that's coming down the line. I'm excited about what's going on right now. But the folks that I've talked to, and Commissioner, you said you had, your inbox was blown up with, in support of the project. Mine was blowing up with folks saying, not right there. So that's where, that's where I stand on that. But let it be clear, I am totally pumped about where I live and the potential that we have in. But let it be clear, I am totally pumped about where I live and the potential that we have in our downtown.
It reminds me of a, I don't remember if Alan Rhodes created this or I created it or we did it together. But it was a metaphor that we talked about when he was serving on the commission. And it was this idea of what's the role of government? And you, this commission's had that conversation multiple times actually, and I appreciate that. It always makes me think outside the box. And the metaphor that we used was that of a baseball field. And that the role of government is to create this, the field setting so that it's clean, it's ready, it's ready to play on. And then we allow the private investment groups and community to be the players on the field. I think that is a very good analogy for the role of government and I hope that's what we're doing here. I believe that it is. It sounds to me like we have spurred on significant interest even beyond Wayland Ventures and I, that's the point. That's the point. Let's get more players on the field. Let's set the field. Let's get them ready and let's get them to work and get them to play. And I think that is the goal here. I know it is. It's the goal of the TIF. It's the goal of this commission. We've been working our butts off for years to make sure the city is business-friendly. We want to make sure there's a signal out to the world that we are ready and willing and able. And so we can do that. There's, there are concerns. I hear them. I think that we've worked through a lot of those, but a lot of those will be worked through as we move forward. And as we move forward with this partner in, in Wayland Ventures. So I also wanted to bring up a concern I heard that I had the opportunity to speak with Wayland and negotiate. And I wanted to throw this out at this, at this body. I did hear some concerns from the community, also from some candidates who might be serving in, in this commission next year. And, and as they've, as they said, they'll be inheriting these projects. And that was the concern in the agreement about the kind of open-endedness of the remediation costs of the environmental on that site. And so I was able to speak with Wayland and negotiate an opportunity for us to cap that at the purchase price of the, of the land. And that way, that becomes a budget-neutral item for us if the remediation were to have to, to go that high. At least there's a cap and it would not be an open-ended amount of money. So I'd like to read that amendment that I want to put on the table tonight and then we can discuss it if you are all are okay with that. Okay, so I want to make a motion to amend section 5.4 as the following. Should the developer be required to perform any remediation work on the development site, the city shall reimburse the developer the actual costs of the remediation as provided under Article 6 of this agreement. This is where it changes, just so everyone can know, up to the equivalent of the purchase price of tracks one and three. Should the cost of additional remediation exceed this amount, the city and the developer shall work collaboratively to identify additional sources of funds to be used for remediation. However, should the additional cost of remediation exceed such available funds, the developer shall not be bound to the conveyance of the property. Can I get a second? Thank you. Okay, so basically what this is saying, and then we can have this discussion and is basically that, that if there, let's say there's a remediation cost that comes up through the, the first parts of, of the agreement, the due diligence is going to happen. And it is exceeding the purchase price, which I do believe is around $300,000 is what it gets to. If it exceeds that, then this is saying that the developer and the city will work together to see if there are additional funds somewhere that can help with that, with that. Sometimes there's brownfield grants. There's other grants that will be available to help with environmental remediation. If not, if those funds cannot be identified, then the, the property will not be conveyed necessarily. The developer can choose for that not to be conveyed to them. So basically if we can't find the money, then they're not obligated to spend it and to do the project. So that's their decision, but at least we're capping the amount of money that will be spent on the remediation.
Would that all be reimbursable through the TIF back to the city? Any expenditures on that?
City Manager, I want to make sure I'm clear. Yes, those are reimbursable by the TIF.
That's exactly right. That's a TIF-eligible expenditure. Anything we pay for infrastructure improvements, remediation, you know, groundwork, that type of stuff, those are, and lighting, those are all TIF-eligible expenditures. Basically though, you can't get that back until you have increment raised. So that's why you need the investment to generate the increment. And then we'll get that paid back to the city from the TIF back to the city's general fund.
But that, yes, okay, that is money that we would be able to reimburse the city back for.
Yes.
If they build on the site. If they, right.
Any other questions or, or concerns about this motion to amend the agreement?
We vote on the amendment tonight.
We will be voting on the amendment tonight, not on the full ordinance. That's for tomorrow. If it does pass, we will vote tomorrow on the ordinance as amended. If it does not pass, we'll vote, we'll vote on the original ordinance. If no, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, this is our property. So even if, if we were just redoing the parking lot, they could, there could be those costs there. So this is an opportunity to get help with that and get TIF reimbursement for that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point here. You know, regardless of what happens moving forward, that lot is in, in bad shape.
Terrible shape.
Something is going to have to be done. And most likely if you do something to it, you're going to have to have, if there are environmental issues on there, you'll have to remediate them. Again, this is not stating that there, that we know the issue for sure. There was environmental studies done. Phase one and phase two was done. And so there's some confidence there that there aren't major issues. But as the project goes forward, we want to make sure that we protect the city. And that's what I heard from our community, that we want to make sure we protect the city and cap this remediation. So as somebody put it, it doesn't get out of hand. And, and this is what we're doing with this amendment.
So let me see if I understood what Commissioner McElroy said. So if we went in there and we did a major resurfacing, a major work on that parking lot, then that being in the TIF district, that's reimbursable?
Well, I'm going to step into that. It would be if we, if we get the TIF district established, we have to have the TIF district first.
Right, so we're still preliminarily approved for the TIF, right? And we have, and we have time to, what, what is it? Two, three years? And then we could, if we need an extension, we could do that as far as the, the $20 million, I think it's, yeah, $20 million investment. I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking I'm right on that.
Jim?
Jim, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Got to push that spacebar a little bit harder. The, I can hear you, Commissioner. You're exactly right. The, you have two years, then an extension of two more years to four years to meet, to reach that mandatory requirement of $20 million. But I think what Commissioner Wilson was saying is you have to have that threshold met before you're, you're able to start bringing in the increment. So we can't really capture the revenues back until we get that threshold met. So if we don't reach the $20 million mark, we're, the, the TIF money's not going to be there for us to bring.
Right, understand, understand.
If we were to have to do something to the parking lot, just to keep the parking lot without, without a TIF, we have to, the city would have to pay 100% of it.
100%.
Yeah, but we're, I understand that, but preliminarily, we've been approved for the TIF. We're working toward that 20, that sum already. We're working toward that. That's understandable. What I'm talking about is that in that process, we do the work on, if we do the work on the parking lot and we meet that threshold of $20 million, then we'll get it back. So whether Wayland or anybody else comes, we do that work on the parking lot, we meet that threshold of $20 million, we get that money back.
Yeah, I, I think I understand what you're saying and I think it's, it's a matter of, you know, how much risk do we want to take? So we have a developer at the table right now with agreement right in front of us that we've done a year and a half worth of work on. It's going to take them another year and a half. That's two and a half years. Probably it's going to be three years by the time it's actually able to be counted towards that, that anchor or towards that $20 million. So you're looking at lengthy timelines and, you know, I guess for me, we've got this right in front of us to ensure that we are, that we're meeting that threshold and not just kind of on a hope and a prayer that we do, you know? So it's right in front of us right now.
And the whole time, Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting, but the whole time that that's going on, the, the bill grant and what we're doing on the riverfront is being developed. So it's, it's not like everything stops downtown waiting on this development to enhance everything. It's, 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 it's moving. It's moving. And I'm, I'm excited about that. And I just, I, I think there was an interesting amendment there. So that's why I asked that question. So I'm good. I'm good with it.
Any other questions or comments before I call the question? No? Okay. City Clerk, would you call roll please?
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. And just to be clear, before we move on, so we voted on an amendment to, to, we've been getting this all wrong for the last three meetings. So I just want to make sure we're all clear and on the same page. Okay. We just introduced an ordinance to discuss, agree, the agreement with Wayland Ventures. We have now approved an amendment to that ordinance that we will discuss, we will actually vote on tomorrow night in our meeting. Did I get close to that? Okay, all right, good, 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 good.
Because we're Thursday night.
What?
We're not meeting Thursday night.
You're not meeting Thursday nights. Oh, that's great. Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So City Clerk, is that, are we good on that?
Yes, we are all good on that.
Okay.
All right, I'll ask the City Clerk to read item 5F, please.
Opposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving a First Amendment and Extension to Write a First Refusal Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Paducah Riverfront Hotel With Respect to a Public Project Authorizing the Execution of the First Amendment." This ordinance approves and authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of First Amendment and Extension to Write a First Refusal Agreement dated November 4th, 2015 between City of Paducah Riverfront Hotel, the developer, as to the real estate owned by and generally located at 501 North Third Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky. The First Amendment amends and extends the expiration date of the original agreement for two more years and amends the developer's commitments under the agreement to allow more flexibility in the type of full-service accommodations for transient travelers and tourists to be developed on the real estate.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Nick, questions or comments about this item?
I would just say it's another developer that continues to be interested in our community. They put a lot of money here too. Three, four years ago on the Holiday Inn that, which had been doing very well and is, is continuing to recover. And again, I said, we had a lot of people there last week and this is a great developer as well, already doing more development throughout the state. So it does keep them interested in Paducah and keeps that strong partnership with them. And it's a, the first write of refusal, correct? I mean, it's the right of refusal.
Right. Um, I'm sorry, are you finished, Commissioner?
I am.
Okay. I think that's a very valuable piece of real estate for us to hang on to. I think the developer down there now, they fulfill their obligation of building that hotel. We fulfill our obligation of that first, that first agreement with them moving forward. I think we're square. And I think that piece of property, we should hang on to that. So.
I would just say in that area that that is a prime piece of real estate that originally I felt like was the best location. It's still a great location for an additional hotel in that area and it anchors the convention center. Would help make it profitable, but I think we need, need to keep it to the market for someone potentially because it's, this group has had an option on it for three years and hasn't chosen to exercise it. And I think we need to, to keep it for development for anyone that's interested rather than locking it up and not allowing for any potential competition to who's already down there. So if, if I knew they were going to develop that parcel, I would be all in and supportive 100%. But we need to leave it open for the market, for whoever's interested that comes along and wants to develop it rather than taking it off the market and locking it up.
I also met with the city attorney that worked on this agreement this week. And she assured me that this agreement is simply a gesture of good faith to somebody that, people that have been great city partners. And all it is, is for first refusal. It is not the specifics of the sale of what they would do with it or if they could hold it in block competition or if they could resell it. All of those things would be worked out if they wanted to buy it at that time. This is simply a first refusal opportunity for them. And the specifics that have been raised by other community leaders would not, are not in play with this agreement. Those, those things would be hammered out at the time of sale. So to me, it's, it's a group of people that have been great community partners. They desire for us to extend the first refusal to them. So I think that, that, that makes a lot of sense to me and it encourages them to develop. And, and as like I said, if they decide they want to purchase, then we hammer out the, the deal with them.
So, so basically what are you saying? That we just, the property there, we, we're telling Holiday Inn guys, we, we taking the money off the table and saying, hey, guys want to develop this, this piece of property, you get first refusal if someone else wants to develop. We're going to come to you. So there's, we're going to take the money off the table, the $300,000?
The money is on the table. The money is the only, the only, money, the money's the only detail of the agreement.
So let's take the money off. Let's take the money off the table and, and just have a gentleman's agreement. And they should be able to trust us like we trust them, right? So if we, we own, we own the property, if someone from out of town comes in or in town that wants to develop that property, we will go over, knock on the door and say, hey, you got that first refusal, what are you going to do? At that point, they either decide that they're going to develop or not, and then we move on. We don't need the money on the table.
The money on the table is the negotiating part. I mean, they've agreed, there's a $300,000 agreement that if they decide they want that land to build the hotel, they're supposed to pay us. If someone else comes in and they want that land and they're willing to pay $300,000 for it and Lingate says, no, we're not ready to do it, we're not ready to build a hotel, then we sell it to the next developer that wants it.
So we, if we, if we are in control of the property and the $300,000, I mean, you put the, you put the price tag on it. We take that off the table. We got it. And we're going to extend that first refusal to, to the Holiday Inn crew. And they come and they say, you know what? We want to, we want to do business. Okay? So what do we do? Sell it to them for $300,000? Is that what you're saying?
We could, or if you'll remember, when we had the agreement with them to build the Holiday Inn, we actually gave them the land.
Okay, all right. And then, so.
So that would be part of negotiation, I guess, if they came to us and said, we're ready now to build this hotel. What kind of deal would you give us? We don't want to pay $300,000? That would be part of negotiation. But the $300,000 is on the table now.
So $300,000, they purchased the property and we hope they move on it.
No, they have, if they buy it, they have to build on it. That's part of that agreement.
Does it say that, that, because the agreement, I'm sorry.
Well, that's what I've understood from the, I also had conversations with the city attorney who, she also told me that if they buy it, they have to build.
The one of the last amendments. But that would be part of the agreement, the purchase agreement. That would be ironed out there.
The part of the, part of the amended or the extension, if you will, the new agreement.
The part of the, part of the amended or the extension, if you will, the new agreement is that they wanted us to lessen the requirement. The 300,000 stayed in, that was negotiated by the the commission, that Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Abraham were on back when Lynn Gate first came to town. But that's still in there, that 300,000, which I thought was a solid thing for a right of refusal to to actually identify a fair market value price for the property. I thought that was very solid. But then, at that time, though, the requirement was for them to build a full-service hotel. And what they're saying is lessen that requirement, allow us to to build a boutique hotel or boutique hotel, I don't know how to pronounce that word, boutique hotel with retail on the first floor, which is very similar to the deal we just talked about in our previous agenda item, the boutique hotel with the the retail. So what they're saying, give us two years for right of refusal. The purchase price is 300,000 and allow us flexibility to build a full-service hotel or a boutique hotel.
And those are very popular. I know some of the ones in Owensboro that they have been building in their downtown area have some of that. It's, we've already used the word cool factor, they have some of that cool factor of some of the new brands of hotels that they would be able to bring those in as opposed to what the original agreement was.
A law company.
It's a hotel beside the convention center. So I guess, you know, they just wanted the flexibility of what, the naming, what type, what company they could partner with.
So I think sometimes these conversations, because we've got to weave in and out of them, right, to have these conversations and understand each other's perspectives. I think it's really important that we send the right signal to the community and to the developers that are out there and recognize that any developer who has interest on this site should approach the city. Because if they approach the city with interest and we go to Lynn Gate and offer them the first right of refusal, and they do in fact refuse, then that puts a new opportunity on the table for that developer. That is a really important signal, I think, we need to send to the development community so that there isn't this misunderstanding that this is locked up. Yes, there's a, there's a risk and a chance that Lynn Gate will will take that first right and they will buy the property. But guess what? Then they've got to act, and then we're gonna have a development happening because there was interest. So this is how, this is the competition. This is the competition forcing development to happen. And I think Commissioner Watkins, you were the one who mentioned, you know, or no, most Commissioner Abraham, that's what happens, right? Developers come in, they think they can can make their way here. And so we're, again, this is the ball field. We're facilitating the ball field right now, we're getting it ready for competition. And that's what happens here.
Yeah, well, let's let's hang on to the ball field. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe you're gonna grab that one. I don't think I recall you doing a baseball analogy, though, so I'm I'm listening.
We have to crawl over it. Yeah, we're trying to be business friendly here, that's what it comes down to. Come, come do business with us.
I I would just like to say, I appreciate Lynn Gate and what they've done. Holiday Inn is beautiful and it's being utilized, and it's it's been wonderful for downtown Paducah, and it's leading to growth that we're talking about right now. But I I would like to leave the land available because there are other, there's other vacant land around there and other land that may be available in the future that could be coupled with this land to build an even larger development. So I just hate, I mean, I love that company, I love the people, I know most investors and appreciate what they do, have done for Paducah and downtown. But I I really don't want to lock that down. I think we need to leave it on the market for whoever is interested in development. And again, they may want to couple it with some of the surrounding property to build a larger development down there. So I, you know, if they build down there, that's wonderful, you know, I'll support it. But I just think we need to keep it available for whoever comes along that might be interested in doing something different.
Commissioner Watkins, I have, I'm so interested because I I think this 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 property is locked in by streets, right? So I don't, I don't know where the additional land is near it.
Well, there, I'm just referring to maybe more than one facility. I'm not talking about one big huge building.
Okay, okay, okay.
The development that would encompass other buildings.
In addition to Lynn Gate, which is a developer out of Owensboro, they partnered with a lot of local developers. So I feel like we are working with local developers. I I would hope that they would be interested if Lynn Gate's gonna build again in our community. Those people would want to be with them again. And if not, I guess they would find some other investors. But Lynn Gate's been a great partner, their local investors with them have been great. They built a beautiful hotel here, and if they want to have that first right of refusal, that's all they're getting, is a first right of refusal, and it's to buy the land. And, you know, we did give it to them before, and I'm glad we did, I thought it was a great deal for them. And I think this is a good deal for them, too. And if they come forward and want to negotiate that they're ready to move forward, I think we'd be willing to negotiate with them and meet with Lynn Gate, Glenn Higdon and his crew and the local developers that partnered with him on that. So it's important that we remember those are local developers that were very much involved with Lynn Gate, and they want this first right of refusal. They've asked for it, they want to be partnered with the city.
Now, I think, I think Lynn Gate has been great for Paducah, and Paducah's been great for Lynn Gate. That's, that's the, that's the way that works. And moving forward, if if a development happens down there and Lynn Gate is is the principal, I'm pretty sure he will continue to use the the crew that got the Holiday Inn built. But I think that 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 piece of property there is is a valuable piece, obviously. And I think that's a piece that we need to hang on to. Not holding on to it like we don't want to let it go, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a nice piece. And it's gonna attract a lot of attention, so not so quick to get, to lose control of that.
Are we sure that Lynn Gate is required to build anything if they exercise the option on this land aside from what they've already built?
Yeah, that's what the city attorney told me, didn't they tell you that, Commissioner McElroy? If they exercise that option, they are required to build on it.
Yes, and we would, we would stipulate that in the bill, bill of sale.
With even more detail. Right, in the agreement now.
The first right of refusal comes with conditions that they have to meet, and that includes building the hotel.
The, the.
Be $300,000.
Yeah.
The, the, the agreement that I read, it didn't specifically mention Lynn Gate in there. It said that the, the, the property would be developed, but it didn't specifically say Lynn Gate.
Well, it's a contract with Lynn Gate. I specifically asked those questions of the city attorney, and that's what I understood.
It's actually called Kentucky ULPA Limited Partnership.
Yeah, yes, same question with her.
Same.
It's like an umbrella, an umbrella company that that they use. And then it says, "Buy and through its general partner, Paducah Hotel, Inc." We call them Lynn Gate Hospitality. They call themselves Kentucky ULPA Limited Partnership and Paducah Hotel, Inc. The same people.
They need to put that in parentheses then.
I had those same questions, Commissioner Abraham.
All right, if it's okay, we're gonna move on. Everyone okay? We'll have this item on the agenda again tomorrow night, so we'll be able to discuss again if we need to before taking a vote. Okay, looks like City Manager is up.
I have no comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and any Board of Commissioners have anything they'd like to add?
Not aye.
All right, let me, let me pull up the list of public comments so that we can get through that. Mr. Chino, are you ready to turn your audio and video on of our public commenters? Mr. Chino?
Yes, ma'am, just tell me whenever you want someone unmuted, and I'll invite them into the the chat.
Okay, great. Before we jump in, we do have one, two, three, four, five, six people who are signed up tonight to speak. We do have some people who are signed up to speak on two items on the agenda. So what we will do, for everyone's sake, is allow for three minutes per item. So if you're someone who signed up to to mention two items, we'll give you three minutes for your first. We'll stop the clock, and then we'll give you three minutes for your second item. Cindy Clerk, are we on the same page on that?
Can you see my clock?
Yes.
Yes, we are on the same page on that.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have Mike Martin up first to discuss the city block.
Mike, you are unmuted, you may talk.
Fantastic, thank you. Good evening, Council, thank you for the opportunity to participate in the democratic process. My comments this evening will largely be directed towards my support for the city block project. I'm guessing most of you are aware that small businesses, of which I am one, are responsible for the 50% of all jobs in America. As someone who has spent, invested millions of dollars in Paducah over the last 16 years, and someone who has lived here for the last 11, I hope you will consider my words from someone who proudly calls Paducah home. In these uncertain economic times with small companies going out of business at a record rate, again, let me emphasize that, small businesses are failing at an all-time record rate. Large corporations filing for bankruptcy protections and with GDP declining precipitously for the foreseeable future, that having any opportunity to have a private developer invest over $21 million of their hard-earned money in Paducah is perhaps a generational opportunity. Wayland is not some fly-by-night venture. They are a proven Kentucky proud company with a great history of innovative developments, sound fiscal decision-making, and bilateral partnerships that get glowing reviews from those who have had the opportunity to work with them. I have no prior relationship with Wayland nor my downtown business owner. My business is on the south side, an area of town clamoring for this kind of investment. We'd do about anything to have somebody wanting to invest $21 million over here, but they don't. You know where they do? City block. If approved, the city block development will both fulfill the TIF requirements that our community will otherwise lose and give the city the economic opportunity to invest in infrastructure projects like stormwater improvement without burdening citizens and businesses with additional taxes or servicing debt by issuing bonds to pay for needed repairs. It is my hope that in some of this future increased tax revenue from both and population decline Paducah has suffered for the last 20-plus years and increased tax revenues from the jobs and growth that city block will spur will hopefully increase investment in the south side. Mayor Harless, I'd like to say thank you for your service and your leadership these past four years. To have this opportunity is wonderful, and I look at our future lead, I look to our future leadership to objectively look at this opportunity for what it is, a slam dunk win for Paducah's future. Lastly, I'd like to address Commissioner Abraham. Richard, I don't know you as well as I would like, but I know you're a man of principle and integrity, a man who is open to change and one who is willing to examine his biases. As a candidate for mayor, I would urge you to reconsider your opposition to this $21 million private investment in our community. It's your administration that will benefit second only to the citizens of Paducah. If we support this project today, the next administration will reap the benefits of job and population growth, increased economic opportunity, and it will make all those who work tirelessly to promote Paducah and McCracken County to the outside world easier as it will demonstrate that Paducah is going places. That Paducah is the kind of community that invests in its people, all of them, and not just a privileged few. Thank you for your time this evening, and please consider that both the majority of your constituents as well as the overwhelming majority of downtown business owners support this project. Please don't be swayed by a vocal few and entrenched money and political interests.
All right, thank you very much, thank you for your comments. Mr. Chino, before we move forward, do you mind actually announcing when the clock is off? Because I'm noticing that my connection is actually slowing down the clock on my screen. Are you there, Mr. Chino? I think you're muted.
Yes, Mayor, we can do that, it wasn't unmuting me, so no problem. I will announce at the three-minute mark when your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much, I want to make sure that we're fair, and I've noticed my connection is not strong. Next up, we have Yvonne Gray, who wants to discuss the city block.
Hi, Yvonne, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to this, about the city block. For 40 years, the city block on Water Street and Broadway and Jefferson and Second Street have been used and established for a parking lot, celebration festivals and raids, and fundraising block. A tradition has been established for the citizens of Paducah and McCracken County, surrounding counties, and enjoy and spend their dollars at downtown stores. Whether intentional or unintentional, the 40 years, the tradition has been established, the citizens of Paducah use this block when coming and enjoying downtown and the river. The design building, I have a problem with the design. For the first thing, the design looks like a bunch of blocks or cardboard boxes. And the city designed, or this Wayland design, shows that the parking area is enclosed all four sides except for a small entrance area to the parking lot. I've looked at the design of the Waylands, and they have not shown any other design to get into the parking. The parking will house for those people who are using the facility of residence and for the hotel, that will be primarily the ones that will use the parking space. When it comes to city facet festivals or anything, it's closed area, it's basically nonusable. Now, when it comes to Broadway, going down Broadway to the main entrance to the riverfront, we have a tunnel effect with the two, two side buildings. And they're the same size, they're, the design is not really appropriate. It looks like, more like a warehouse. I do not think that the city commission should make this parking area a motel area, closed. It really would be an open space, beautiful open spaces if an agricultural designer came in, and it would work. It would be a festive area, it'd be like Central Park in New York. It would be an open area, wide open, right? Across the street on Jefferson, you have down towards the convention center, a lot of open space, it would go right over to the dock, looking down on the river, beautiful space. One of the things I really have a problem with is the design of the the buildings that you're putting on that open city block. The other problem is tradition and the facility, you're cutting out the citizens of Paducah to do the, to be able to go and celebrate downtown. You're blocking them out, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
All right, next we have Terry Lundberg to discuss the city block.
Thank you, Mayor Harless, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First of all, I was part of the Leadership Kentucky cohort that was here last week, and I do want to say that overwhelmingly, people that have been here five and 10 years ago were just stunned by the change in our community, and that made me so proud. And I, at the end of our meeting, I was sure to tell them, that did not come without controversy. So what I recognize is, our whole community is emotionally connected to this property. I first want to state on the record, I am in support of this project. But like the last speaker, my only issue is I feel like they can do a better job with the design. I want to welcome our community, and I think if we can find a unifying design, something that, I know you're not gonna please everyone, but if we can find that element that unifies our community, for instance, don't make the middle a parking lot, make the middle actually community space. But it's gonna retake, it's gonna take redesigning that project, and that's the thing I think that could bring our community together, is if we can preserve the integrity of it being a a community space and not designed to house parking, like the last speaker said. So just to reiterate the points, thank you for shouldering the negativity because that's the hardest part of change, is shouldering that negativity. And and I appreciate you guys, the Commissioners, you, Mayor Harless, City Manager, for shouldering that negativity with professionalism and respect. And that's how we move the needle forward. And I just want our community to know that people from all across the state that were here last week that haven't been here in a long time see the benefits of withstanding the negativity and coming with a unifying solution and approach. So thank you for doing the hard work, and thank you for standing up for our community. And please continue to support the project, but perhaps I implore you to ask Wayland to rethink this design and look for a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I I do want to take the opportunity, since you both mentioned input, to make sure that you recognize if this does, if it does pass and this agreement does get approved and move forward, that there is a significant process on the front end of this for public input, especially for the public space, Terry, that you mentioned. The public space is the largest portion of this entire project. So I hope that you'll, you'll keep, keep engaged and participate in those conversations should this move forward. uh, should this move forward. Uh, next we have Michael Tara, who wants to discuss the city block.
We good?
Yep.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for all of their hard work, um, on sorting through all of the different options and coming up with an extraordinary opportunity, uh, for Paducah. Uh, other speakers have actually covered much of the things that I would have touched on, um, so I'm going to kind of cherry pick my comments. One of the things that, um, I'm really impressed with is the partner that we have in Wayland. And, um, the thing that comes to my mind is that here is a mature, successful, uh, company, uh, who not only develops the properties but holds on to them for an extended period of time. And these guys who are willing to put in $21 million in a very short amount of time, who are willing to get us off of, uh, home plate, uh, on this whole TIF process, um, have done the homework that establishes their willingness to invest today in Paducah. And this is not a short-term investment for them. You know that these guys are putting up this kind of money because they believe that they're going to be here for decades. And, um, while I, uh, don't have the resources to examine the legal documents, I don't have the resources personally to investigate in depth what the effects of this might be, I believe that these multi-million dollar investors do have those resources and they've called those resources into play. And I'm going to believe their research and I'm also going to believe in investing in Paducah. So, uh, I encourage everyone to move forward with this agreement. Uh, it's structured in a way that, uh, that we cannot help but succeed if we work together on it. So thanks for all your hard work and, uh, I am through. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mr. Tara. Okay, next up we have Mary Byrne, who wants to discuss, uh, the city block and the Wellness Center. So Mary, we'll start the three o'clock, the three-minute clock for the city block discussion and then we will stop it and restart it for the Wellness Center comments.
You don't, you don't need to do that. I, I can probably get everything set in three minutes.
All right.
Because, uh, you know, the Wellness Center is, uh, I mean, I think you've already figured that one out. I was really glad that you wanted to, um, continue to, uh, look at viable options to possibly make it happen in the future. Uh, so that's, that's, that's good for that. The, uh, I, I feel like a burden, burden hand, uh, and this bird wants it there. They came to us, they've got the money, they've worked with you all. Uh, I, I can't see that you can really step away from that at this point. Um, without losing a lot of face and without losing a lot of respect in the, in the developers' community. Because you, you walk away from this, uh, deal, what, what are the developers going to think that they want to work with you? So, uh, so that's one thing. But, and, and lastly, this isn't on those first two, but, um, I, I really want to speak to the, uh, the, the thing about the transparency.
Just picture it as an agenda item, Mary. We've got to stick with the agenda item.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, you'll have to put it on an agenda item so that I can talk about transparency.
Send us an email if you have an opinion about it.
Okay, I do, I do. I, my opinion is they should show up for the meetings.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, uh, Victoria Tara, who also wants to discuss the city block and Wellness Center. And, uh, Victoria, if you'd like us, we can do the three minutes each or you can do like Mary and shove it all into one.
Uh, oh, it's not letting me turn on my video. Can you hear me?
Yes. See your face?
Oh, here we go. Uh, there I am. Hey, guys. Um, uh, well, since you guys already voted in, in favor of letting Jim continue with the, with, uh, looking into the Wellness Center, then I don't have too much more to say about that. And, and you, and because I've, I've spoken about it before at meetings, you know how I feel about it. I love the idea of having the Wellness Center and I think it's a great service that we would provide to everyone in our community. So, um, for the city block project, I too am in, very much in favor of that. I'm a member of the Art Guild of Paducah and we have a storefront right on Market Square and this would be wonderful for us. Uh, I'm a gallery owner in Lower Town and I think that this project would benefit, uh, us as well. The whole, the whole revitalization of the riverfront and the downtown and getting everything walkable and connecting everything, it, it, it creates nothing but good. And, um, I have also, for more than the past five years and just recently not being on the board as of January, I've been on the board of the Paducah Hospitality Industry. And even though I am not a hotel owner and I don't work in a hotel, I have, I've learned a few things over the years from being on this board. And, um, one of the things that's really apparent to me is we need more than two hotels. If we are really going to, to, uh, help our Convention Center and, uh, and let our Convention Center be viable, which for so many years it has struggled, uh, the, having the Holiday Inn, which I just love, is fabulous. Having another hotel downtown is going to do nothing but good, but then we're going to need another one. We need more beds because we're going to need, in order to really fill up and make the Convention Center a, uh, a healthy entity, it's going to need more beds than just the two hotels that we're planning. So I'm totally on board. Let's get this hotel downtown. Let's get that first right of refusal because in my mind, I think that what they're waiting for is this, this hotel's going to come, this is going to be awesome, and then we're going to build our hotel. So I say, let's go for it. Thanks, you guys. I do appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you, Ms. Tara. Okay, and that concludes our public comment portion of our meeting tonight. Uh, I'm going to make a motion for us to adjourn.
I was expecting it.
Second? Victoria, you're still not muted. There we go. I thought she was seconding me. Did I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor for adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone. Have a good evening.